Okay, we'll call the Town Council June 13 meeting to order. I would like to acknowledge that we're holding this meeting on the unceded lands of the Mi'kmaq. And let's stand for the singing of "Oh, Canada."
Oh, Canada, our home and made it land. True patriot love in all of us command. With glowing arcs we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land, glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Okay, record of attendance, everyone's here. No abs or regrets. Any declarations of conflict of interest? And you can certainly declare at the time of the agenda item. Go ahead, councillor Bell. Go ahead.
I just want to note that I did not participate in any of the discussion or consideration of the Here, Here Society Grants to Organization request. And I had no participation in the development of the grant proposal.
Perfect, thank you. Anyone else? Good, okay. Approval of agenda. So we always approve the agenda as circulated, but I am going to say we need to change the Cow meeting date. So are we okay? It's sort of an addition. Again, oh, is it? Okay, good. Excellent. Okay, then we're all right. So, thank you. Moved, seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Okay, approval of minutes, Town Council, May 16, 2024. Okay? Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carried, thank you. Audit report. The recommended motion there is that council accept the audit report for the year ended March 31, 2023. So if we're going to hear the report before we do that, just want you to know what we're all up to. Okay, welcome, Gloria. Grant Thornton will...
Thank you very much. So I did hand out the audit report, so each one of you should have a copy of it. I will note that I met with your audit committee and we've gone over these financial statements in detail. So tonight's presentation is just high level, but if you have any questions, please feel free to ask them. So I'm going to go right directly to the independent auditors' report, so that's the third page in. So this is our report to council and obviously to the residents of the town of Yarmouth. It is a clean audit opinion. We did not find anything while we were doing our audit that would cause us to have to change the wording in our report to limit its use or to change the scope. So it is a clean audit opinion. The first paragraph is just the introduction, that these are the financial statements of the town of Yarmouth for March 31, 2023. The second small paragraph is our formal opinion, that is, that the accompanying consolidated financial statements present fairly in all material respects. The financial position of the town of Yarmouth is at March 31, 2023, and the results of its operations and its cash flows for the year that ended in accordance with Canadian Public Sector Accounting Standards. That's the framework that you fall under. So the next section is just what we call our basis for the opinion, and this just tells you that we have to follow Canadian generally accepted auditing standards when we do your audit. We have to make sure that we properly plan and implement the audit and execute it. And we believe that the audit evidence that we have obtained is sufficient and appropriate to find a basis for the opinion. We also have an other matter paragraph. So we do include additional pages at the back, pages 25 to 30 are included in this consolidated financial statement. For additional information, they're not required under the Public Sector Accounting Standards, but it is the operations of the water utility, and your statements do go to the UARB, and they like to see the detail of the water separate from these consolidated financial statements. So we do include those as well for their purposes. The next section is the responsibility of management and those charged with governance. So it's management's responsibility to prepare the information that goes into these financial statements, to set a system of internal controls that is appropriate in the circumstances, to make sure that your financial data is being properly recorded during the year. The systems are there to make sure things are being reviewed, if there's errors, that they're finding those errors and they're correcting them. And their whole goal, the same as ours, is to make sure that these financial statements are free of material misstatement, whether that's due to error or fraud. Also, in preparing the financial statements, they have to do what we call a lookout test. So for the next 12 months, if something happened, catastrophe hit, would you have enough assets to realize to pay off your debt? So management has to make that assessment, and which they have concluded, yes. And then those charged with governance, which are basically your audit committee and ultimately you as council, is oversight of those processes. Not the day-to-day oversight, but high-level oversight, that you're comfortable that management has put those processes in place. Then at the top of the next page is the auditor's responsibility. So our objective is to obtain reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free of material misstatement. And reasonable assurance is a high-level assurance, but it's not 100% guarantee. So there are instances where things still go undetected, we usually find out later on. That's due to fraud normally, is when we find these kinds of things a few years down the road. But in order to get the risk as low as possible that there aren't any of those things, we do those items that are all in the bulleted points. So during the planning, we identify the areas that have the highest risk, the risk that there could be an error in your financial statements. And we spend more time in those areas during the audit. We do audit all material balances, but we spend more time in the areas of higher risk. We have to make sure that we understand how your internal controls operate. We don't audit them, we don't actually give you an opinion on your internal controls, but we have to understand how they work so that we know where the financial data is being processed throughout the year. We also look at your accounting policies. First of all, we want to make sure that the policies that you're following are in accordance with Public Sector Accounting Standards, and then the ones that you've chosen to use are actually being implemented on a regular basis. We have to make sure that we can agree with management's assessment of that going concern test, which we do. And then we evaluate the overall presentation. So we're going to go over the first few pages, which are the numbers, but also at the back are a lot of notes and supporting schedules, so we have to take those into consideration when we do our audit as well. And then, because this is a consolidation, this takes into account the operations of all of your controlled entities, we have to be comfortable that enough audit work has been done on those entities as well, because their operations are also reflected in these financial statements. So from the consolidation perspective, this brings into account the town itself, that's the operating fund, the capital fund, the operating reserve, and the capital reserve, but then also your share of the operations of the Yarmouth International Airport Corporation, the Yarmouth Area Industrial Commission, the Yarmouth County Solid Waste Management Authority, Yarmouth and Acadian Insurers Tourism Association, and the Mariner Centre Management Authority. And up until 2022, also the operations of the Yarmouth Waterfront Development Corporation, but it was closed during 2022, so there aren't any significant operations anymore. So those are all the entities that are consolidated into this financial report, dated today. Hopefully council will approve them when we're done. Page three, the next page, is management's responsibility for financial reporting. So under Public Sector Accounting Standards, management in writing has to take responsibility for these financial statements. So this is their report. I will go over it, it just basically sets out what their responsibilities are and what things they've done during the year to make sure that they're comfortable that the financial statements are appropriate. So then on to page four. So this is the snapshot of the year from revenues and expenditures perspective. You can see we have the budget, we have the actual of 2023 and the actual of 2022. And so the budget numbers won't look like what you would have seen when you originally set your budget at the beginning, when you do it for rate-setting purposes, because that's a cash flow, it's not a Public Sector Accounting Standards budget. It's just for your cash purposes to set your rate. So we have to do some adjustments to that budget to make it a Public Sector Accounting Standards budget. Just as one example, you rate for a payment to the Tri-County School Board, and that effectively is an assessment that's sent to you from the province, it says, here's how much you're going to pay them this year. So you're just acting as an agent, you collect it on behalf of another organization, it's not actually your revenue under Public Sector Accounting Standards, so we have to back it out of your revenue number. You had it as an expense, we netted up against the actual revenue. It's just one example of some of the things that we do to make your budget a Public Sector Accounting Standards budget. And this budget also incorporates the budget from each one of those controlled entities as well. They all set a budget at the beginning of the year, and we pick up your share of that budget. So in terms of the revenue, the original budget was set at $22,398,251. You came in at $22,905,345. So you're $500,000 better than your budget, which is, it's awesome, and it's really not that big a change, it's a little less than 2%. So on a $22 million budget, to be off by budget by that much is really good results. And then if we compare it to the prior year, last year your revenue was $23,337,42, so you're actually down $128,000 from the prior year. So not a significant change in the operations. So some of the things that are different from the revenue perspective, we look at the tax line, because it's obviously the largest amount, very close to your budget, it's up $326,000 over the prior year. So there's a couple of things happening here. Assessments continue to grow, so PVSC sets your assessments, but you set your rate. And your tax rate, remembering this is 2023, not 2024, your tax rate from 2022 to 2023 went up 2 cents commercial and 2 cents residential. So, and then we can see also that your deed transfer tax is actually leveling off, you're almost...
What did you say about app?
Sorry?
What did you say when app?
The tax, the commercial rate and the residential rate, from '22 to '23, not '23 to '24. Remember, we're a year behind. Sorry.
Sorry, just having a little heart flash.
Yeah, that's okay. Yeah, no problem. Yeah, and so in this particular year, your deed transfer tax had been going like this for a long time, right? And you were way above your budget, your actual results. So now it's starting to level off, and you're very close to your budget on your deed transfer tax. So that's the main item in your taxes. Some of the other things that have changed, you can see, unconditional transfers from other governments. Last year it was $1.7 million, this year it's just a little over $1 million. If we recall to 2022, that was the year that the government, the provincial government was, must have had extra money, and they gave you double your financial capacity grant, and so that is about $677,000. You've got two payments in 2022, and you only got the one payment in 2023, as per normal. As well, in 2022, everybody got a double gas tax payment as well, and that was about $560,000. So that's why last year's revenues were higher than this year's. On the other side of things, when we look at the operations of your subsidiaries, their revenues have continued to increase over the past couple of years. Specifically, in the Mariner Centre, they had a really great 2023 compared to 2022. 2022 was still having quite a bit of impact from COVID. During the games, some of the canteen wasn't always open, there weren't as many events in the summer, but in 2023, and also Mariners on Main was only open for part of the year in 2022. 2023, it's open for the full year, and they did better than their budget. It's hard to know, it had been closed, they set a conservative budget, and they actually did much better on the revenue perspective than what they had originally set in their budget. And the other thing that's up quite a bit over your budget and the prior year is what is interest. So you can see that it's $286,000 this year, it was only $57,000 last year. So you're going to see when we look at the next page, you have a significant increase in your cash balances, and interest rates were up, so you're earning a lot more on what you've got invested in your accounts. So while you didn't get those double payments, your other revenues have gone up, so you're really consistent in terms of your revenue in total. On the expense side of things, you had budgeted $21,128,730, and you came in at $22,208,657, and last year it was $20,909,179. So you're about $1 million higher than your budget, and a little over $1 million higher than the prior year. There's really two main things that go into that, and one of them is the asset retirement obligation. So the reason why we're late is we've been waiting for your asset retirement obligation project to be completed. So what happened is when you went through that project, there is an asset that's set up, and there's a liability set up for those assets that were identified as having a retirement obligation. And so the asset gets amortized, and the liability grows as well over time. So there are additional expenses for amortization on the assets, not just at the town, but of all of the entities, they all had an asset retirement obligation as well. So the additional amounts related to the asset retirement obligation is almost $600,000. So that's the most of the increase in your expenses over budget, because you didn't know how much it would be when you originally set your budget. The other part is, you had quite a bit of overtime in the fire department at the town, and there was some general salary increases at all of the organizations. So in total, when we look at everybody's salary over year over year, it grew by about $400,000. So those two items alone make up the biggest portion of the increase in your expenses. Not unexpected, not unusual either. So your annual surplus this year before what we'd call unusual items is $696,688. And you can see that is quite a bit lower than last year, but whenever we're going to see you getting capital grants, you're always going to have a bigger profit in those years that you have capital grants, because they're usually to buy capital assets, which get set up on your balance sheet as an asset, not expensed. So this is a normal year, I went back and looked at the past four or five years, and these are pretty normal results for what you would see. And so below the line, because those are your true operations, there was a disposal of capital assets, so there was a loss of $132,000 on some of the assets that were either sold or written off. But the big item is what we call the loss on change and proportionate share of controlled entity. So what you did this year is you sold one-third of your 50% ownership in the Mariner Centre, and you sold it to the municipality of Argyle for 50 cents. Basically, you and the municipality sold it to them for a dollar, you got 50 cents on that. Want to take that to the bank? And so what this basically is, is your investment, or your net investment in the Mariner Centre of their capital assets was $1,025,000. So you had to take a write-off of that. It's not cash flow, that's just an accounting number, that we had to recognize the disposal of your share of the assets of the Mariner Centre. And then, when the Yarmouth Waterfront Development Corporation was wound up, there was also assets there that disappeared. So that's the $180,647. So for the year, you have an annual deficit this year, surplus in the prior year and the budget, $641,673. But as I mentioned, most of that are accounting numbers, that's not cash flow. So you started the year with $82,74,361 in what we call accumulated surplus, and we add in the loss for this year, and you end the year at $81,432,688. Okay? On to the next page, five, you'll see that same number at the very bottom, $81,432,688, because two pages must balance. And I know that seems like a big number, so I always say, just look at the number right above it, $79,340,084. That's the amount of your surplus that you've reinvested in your community, that's your infrastructure contributions. So that's the net book value of the buildings, the land, the vehicles, everything that you own in order to provide the services to your residents, that's what you've invested back, is $79 million of that, $81 million.
That's net of depreciation.
Net of depreciation, that is correct, yeah. That's not the original cost, the original cost is significantly higher than that, that's what we call the net book value. So just back up to the top, we classify those items that are readily convertible to cash as financial assets, so they're in the top half of your balance sheet, your statement of financial position. And you can see here your cash balance. Last year it was $4.7 million, this year it's a little over $9 million, so a really big increase. But included in that money is $3.3 million worth of what we call deferred revenue. So cash that you've been given, that you're going to spend in the future on particular projects. So of the $9 million, there's 3.3 that you can't spend just on what you want, it's designated. For example, the things that are in there are, right at the end of the year, March 31, you got the Sustainable Growth Fund money from the province, $660,000 is about what you got a year ago to spend in this year, but it had specific things on for which you could spend it on. So we set that up as what we call deferred revenue, so it's set aside, and you can't spend that. Similarly, within each one of the controlled entities, they have deferred revenue as well. And the Mariner Centre actually had a very big portion, because they had received all of the $4 million from the province for their project in advance. So that $4 million is set aside, can't be spent, it's for their capital project in the future. You own one-third of that $4 million, so included in your $9 million is one-third of theirs. And then you have some other money too, that you had been given as donations for future use as well, that's in deferred revenue. Your receivables are very consistent year over year, we look at them to make sure there aren't any issues with collections, and that they're properly recorded, there's no unusual items noted in any of your receivables. And your other receivables, those are the receivables that also incorporate the numbers from your controlled entities, are down quite a bit, which is good, that means they're working on collecting their receivables as well. You have a small amount really of a portfolio investment, that's in the Industrial Commission, and a little bit of assets held for resale. So your total financial assets are $11,894,362, so up 4.1 million over the prior year. On the liability side, the only thing that's new and different is the asset retirement obligation. You'll see it's the third line down, $2,760,000. So that's recorded as an asset and as a liability under this new handbook section. So this is when you've identified something that you own that has a commitment that you would have to retire it or do repairs to it. So it could be asbestos in a building, at some point in time it'll have to be repaired. The best example is the investment you have in the windmills, because you co-share that with the other two municipalities, and it has a finite life. In your agreement, it says that at the end of year 25, it must be torn, they must be torn down, and the land reclaimed to what it looked like before. So that's an asset retirement obligation, you have a commitment, you must restore the land back to the way it was before the windmills were put up, unless you enter into a new agreement and make that void. But for right now, that's the way it says. So that's a prime example of an asset retirement obligation. We know when that's going to happen, and so you actually had engineers who helped with the costing of what is it going to be at that date, when you actually have to do the repairs or tear down.
So was that in every year? Like a big number like that?
No, this is the first year. It's a one-time, one-time. So it was a new accounting standard that came out that you had to follow. So that number, so while it's at 2.7, the future value of that is $5 million. So this 2.7 will grow to $5 million, but over 30 years, right? So. And then some things might get resolved, and then they'll come out. And if you actually take care of some of those things that have the retirement obligations, they come off of this liability. So it is possible that these numbers could come down, because the other big thing that's in here is the high school, because this is backdated to 2022, right? So I know you are looking at some options for your high school, if that gets resolved, then the liability associated with high school will come off. So that's the biggest change year over year. Your payables are very consistent, there was nothing unusual in there. You have your other post-employment benefits, that's the retiring allowances for your employees, as well as the sick leave that's been set up as an accrual. And then we've talked about the deferred revenue, the 3.3 million, it is higher than the prior year, but that's the money that has to be set aside for the future. And then the last item is really your long-term debt, $166,665 at the end of March 2023, now paid. So as of today, you have no long-term debt anymore. So your total liabilities are $9,801,758, and your net financial asset position, $2,092,000. It is down a little bit over the prior year, mostly from that asset retirement obligation coming in. Then below the line are your non-financial assets, so that net book value of the tangible capital assets, $79,064,000. You spent $2.9 million during fiscal 2023 on new equipment and new assets. So a lot of it was street paving, trail development, you bought some fire equipment, there was some repairs at the ferry terminal, bought some land. And also, within each of the entities that you control, they spent about $800,000 on new equipment. The Solid Waste Management Authority bought a new vehicle out there, a big vehicle, so that's how that number grew. So that gets us back to the bottom of $81,432,688. So those are the two most important pages. Just very quickly, I'll talk about page six. So this is the change in that net asset number that we just looked at on the balance sheet, which I said went down by $396,000. So whenever you're spending a lot of money on capital assets, that is going to be negative. So if you look at last year's, you spent $7.6 million last year on your capital assets. So last year you really drew down that net asset position as well. This year not so much, but you still had a big spend of the capital assets. And then on page seven, similarly, this is a statement of changes in your cash flows. So this is how your cash balance changed. Last year you ended the year at 4.7, this year you ended at 9, so you grew your cash by $4.2 million. And it's a long laundry list of things, but as you collect cash, as you pay it out, it increases and decreases your cash position. And again, the deferred revenue increase of $2 million was a big portion of that increase. So that's my high-level presentation, open to any questions that you may have.
Anyone? Go ahead.
I don't actually have a question, but I did want to point out that the audit committee with Gloria and with Aaron sat down yesterday for two hours and went over this in detail and approved this. And so, thank you very much. And I'd like to repeat in public, thank you for, somebody like me who really has a bit of an issue with numbers, like it's not, it doesn't come as easily. I just want to thank you for making it so palatable and so understandable, and you're very patient with us in fielding all of our questions, so thank you very much.
You're very welcome. We like questions. It was a very great meeting. We enjoy asking, being asked questions and being able to talk about issues, it was great. It's a good meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, so, let's go back to, is there anything else for Gloria?
Nope.
Okay, so the recommended motion is that council accept the audit report for the year ended March 31, 2023. Okay, so moved and seconded? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. I guess we sign them up and get them back to you.
Jeff has all the things to sign. So two council members would sign the financial statements before they leave, that'd be wonderful. And I can collect them tomorrow or next week from Gerry or Sybil. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Okay, public hearing. So under 10A, the land use bylaw amendments, sponsorship recognition signs, the, so this is, we're in a public hearing, right?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just half seeing this, I'm used to paper. Okay, so what happens here with every public hearing? We just ask the public three times, if there's anybody in the public that wants to speak to the issue, you can come up and share any thoughts you have. I'll ask three times, and then council doesn't discuss it now, it'll just come back to us. Actually, it'll be the next agenda item. And did we have anything written in or anything like that to talk about? No? Okay, so no emails or anything like that. So this one is to approve second reading to the proposed land use bylaw amendments designed to introduce and enable sponsorship recognition signs in the town of Yarmouth. Okay. Would anyone like to speak to this one? There's nobody here? Yeah. Anyone want to speak?
What?
And anyone want to speak? Okay, hearing now will go to the next item, which is the same one that council approved, second reading to the proposed land use bylaw amendments attachment one, designed to introduce and enable sponsorship recognition signs in the town of Yarmouth. Okay? Motion? Okay, can I have a seconder? Okay, moved and seconded? Go ahead.
Just briefly, I wanted to mention that this came in different versions, because we really took our time with this one. This came before the planning committee, probably three times, was rejected a couple of times in its forum, and this particular forum is really, it's really good. And basically, it's, the idea is to acknowledge and thank those donors, those businesses who are, you know, taking a stand and, you know, making some kind of a commitment. So it's not an advertisement, it is an acknowledgement and a thank you. And so this is very good, and thanks very much for this one. It was a bit of a walkthrough to get to this point, so very glad to see that it's here. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Go ahead, Councilor Bell.
I just want to say kudos to our planner, Martin Beck, for writing such, with such clarity that he even changed my mind. So yeah, I think that this is, this is a document that is livable and there are protections in it, as you say, Councilor Cleveland, this is not advertising. This is, this is sponsorship. This is about acknowledgement of contribution, so yeah, thank you.
Thank you. So Heather?
Yeah, thank you. I'm in support of this, but the only question I had was regarding guidelines designed to prevent advertisement of businesses for gambling, tobacco, and alcohol. And I know that that was considered, it says in the document, but I don't see that. And is there more to the document that we don't have? Because I just get concerned with if it's sponsorship for children-related things, do we want to look at, should that, you know, involve alcoholic, you know, sponsorship, gambling? And I did see that that was looked at and agreed to, but I don't see it in this document. So I just didn't know if, if there was more to it that I was missing. See, it says, oh, sorry.
No, I was just going to say, I believe there are restrictions on alcohol and tobacco advertising at the provincial and federal level, that probably it isn't an issue. I don't know.
Because it's, I mean, they did say, and it was background, under background, A, B, C, D, E. They said that they, several common themes were identified. Is it B guideline?
It's B, yeah.
Yeah, guidelines designed to prevent advertising businesses related to gambling, tobacco, drug, and alcohol. And that in drafting the proposed amendment, staff incorporated points A, B, and C. But I don't see where they're incorporated in this document. So I guess that's my concern, like they're saying it is, but I don't see it.
Want to read it here?
Well, it literally says, provided. It literally says, a sponsorship recognition sign may be permitted on private property without the issuance of a development permit where the sign is erected in conjunction with. And then B, provided the sign does not advertise gambling, alcohol, drugs, or tobacco-related companies, logos, and trademarks.
Okay, sorry, where is that? Councilor Cleveland, I missed it.
2B.
2B.
So you have to look at the, sorry. You have to look at the second attachment called attachment number, attachment one, proposed LUB amendments, right? There are four PDFs attached.
That's the second one?
Second one. Those are the actual LUB amendments. And Councilor Cleveland just read the provision.
In black, it shows D in part six, signs. And then if you travel down now, 2B says specifically, provided it does not advertise gambling, alcohol, drugs, or tobacco-related companies, logos, and trademarks.
Perfect. I had missed that and I just wanted to make sure that it was in the document. And I guess that was my question, was there something in there that I was missing? So yeah, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Leave your lights on. Are you good?
Yep.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Okay, new business tender results, 2024 granular materials and the recommended motions that we award the tender for granular materials for the 2024 season to Aberdeen Paving. Now, do you want, I mean, I'm sure everybody's read these, but if you want more information, move. Okay, seconded? Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. 12B, that council award the tender for paving and patching for the 2024 season to Aberdeen Paving Limited.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Moved and seconded? Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. We've got the sidewalk incurred program, that council award the tender for the sidewalk incurred program for the 2024 season to D's Decorative Concrete. Okay, so moved and seconded? Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Compost quality control policy amendment? That council amend the compost quality control policy to limit quantities. Yeah, please.
Yep, that's a very simple item. In this policy, we outline how we will sell the finished compost. And previously, there was an unlimited or unlimited maximum that a company could purchase from us. And all that's been changed here is that the town reserves the right to limit quantities. So if we have a lot of demand from citizens taking small amounts, we want to make sure that we can service that, that demand because it's the citizens doing the green cart work that results in us having that nice compost. So we don't want to give it all or sell it all to one big contractor. We want to make sure that citizens have the opportunity to access it. So that's the intent of that amendment.
Very good. Okay, if I get a motion? And a seconded? Thank you. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Loading zone request 372 to 386 Main. That council direct staff to prepare a report on the loading zone request for 372 to 386 Main Street. Which one is it? Does another thrift store go in there? Great. I just have a question, although I know all about the report. Yes, we do. Does it not have a back entrance? Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
That is the building that we either sold a piece or gave them the right-of-way? Did we sell the piece or give them the right-of-way?
Right-of-way.
Right-of-way? So we did, we did give them a right-of-way to go in from Lovett, from Lovett Street, right? Okay.
So, oh, sorry, I can't, you know what? It's because of the light. So, sorry, go ahead, Councilor.
I know it's not what the motion's reading, but just a question. The properties, as you probably have seen it, the bottom of the windows were in pretty bad shape and they're starting to repair it. But do we have any idea what, like, I guess if we're looking at doing the report, do we have any idea what that, like the facade of that's going to look like in the end? Like it looks, looks like they're putting, right now, it looks like it's just this tieback over a window. Do we have any idea what the end result of that might look like?
So, so are they asking for a loading zone for, from 372 to 386? Or are they just asking for a loading zone in front of that property? So it wouldn't, it's not from, no, okay.
So like one parking spot? I don't, I mean, I can't support it like this. I can't because you can get in from behind and those Main Street spaces are just way too valuable, too.
Yeah, I can't speak to the size of the loading zone they're requesting. Just tell you, the request is there. The right thing to do, if you want to consider it, is to refer to staff to get, to get a report. If you're not comfortable with it, you can, you can stop it right here. You're right, we have provided the opportunity for them to have access to the rear. My understanding is the intent for that was to be able to create parking, indoor parking at the lower level. So that wouldn't necessarily, I don't know how that would work in terms of a loading zone. There is a loading zone on the corner of, I guess it's Lovett Street and Main, so just around the corner. What they're requesting, though, is a loading zone of some size on Main Street directly in front of the building.
So, okay, like the Salvation Army, I know you go in behind and Friends of James, you just park wherever you can. They're both thrift stores, so, I mean, I can't, I can't support it, but that's just me. Okay, anyone else? Go ahead.
The reason I even made the motion is because it's for staff to investigate. And so we're not approving or disproving anything, but I always am willing to have, not that the staff has nothing to do either, for sure, but, but, you know, if there's a request like that and the motion is for the staff to investigate it, then I'm absolutely fine to support the investigation part of it. I'm happy to reject it later. But I'm also willing to go into this with an open mind.
Yep. And I, and I hear what you're saying. I just don't want to put it on staff if we're not interested.
I just want to reiterate that the recommendation for it to be referred to staff is, it's a recommendation without prejudice, without, so we're not, we're neither in favor nor against. We are simply passing a request along to staff where it's appropriate for it to be considered and then come back to us, right? Because I wouldn't want staff to think that we were sending that to them because we approve it.
No, or because we don't approve it. Yeah, either, either way.
Well, if we don't approve it, we just can say no now.
And what I'm, and that's what, I guess that's what I'm saying now. I just don't want it to go to staff because I don't feel like it needs to go to staff. We just don't need a loading zone on Main Street. But that's just me. So, yeah, if that makes sense. I understand what the motion is, though, and I respect the motion. Okay, who else? Anybody else? Okay, oh, go ahead.
My only comment is I'm not aware of what the accessibility of the back of the building is as regards for a loading zone. And given that it's going to be a business on Main Street and looking at the rationale behind the business, I'd like to support them if I could. But I'd say I don't know what the back of the building, I don't know what access they have, so without, without knowing that, I can understand the request. I'd be reluctant to say no to them at this point.
I understand them. I understand the request. I just, it's sort of like a drugstore, you can't have a blue spot in front of it. Okay, anybody else? Okay, all those in favor? All those against? Me? Okay, motion carried. Light-up request policy. The council adopt the light-up request policy as presented. Moved and seconded? Whoops, I'm in the wrong thing. Sorry, folks. Okay, seconded? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you. Property tax exemption policy amendment. I got to print mine the next time, I can't find these. That council amend the property tax exemption policy that excludes income paid by the War Veterans Allowance Act and Pension Act. Okay, moved and seconded? Any discussion on this one? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Request to present that council invite Upland Studios to present the what we heard report at the July Committee of the Whole Meeting. So moved, seconded? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Organizational grants? That council approve the 2024 grants to organizations as presented. Moved and seconded? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Bursaries? That council award the town of Yarmouth bursaries to Aliamood, Dunya Rashid, Riley Wallace, and Sawyer Doucette. Moved, seconded? Any discussion? I was really glad to get all those applications because I know Steve and I have sat down a couple of times and had like two. So it was really good. Go ahead, Councilor.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to say. First off, it was, it was nice to see, and I guess the promotion worked because we certainly had those applications, which was great. But I also have to say, in reading those applications, that they're really great and it's kind of inspiring and it's kind of a, it's an honor, I think, for us to be able to help these kids as they move forward. So kudos on them.
It's a big deal. Go ahead, Councilor Heather.
Yeah, I was really excited when I, when I read them. They're just lots of interesting things that these folks are planning on doing and, you know, it's a real honor to be able to help them along, so.
We got some stars, you know? We've got, we've got some stars. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Tender results? So the recommended motion there is that council award the tender for the Jumpstart Multi-Sports Court to Garian Construction for $502,492.50 plus HST. So what's that include? Like what's, what's the portion from, is this our portion?
Yes. So as says there in the memo, the scope consists of construction of an asphalt pad complete with bedding gravels, concrete footings, that would be for the lights and the canopies and so on, electrical stormwater infrastructure. And once that scope is complete, then Prairie, it says Prairie Rubber here, I'm not sure that's the name of the company, Prairie something, comes in to complete and install synthetic rubber surface and fencing and so on and completes the project.
So, so it's 1.5 million? Like is it three?
No, it's a, it's a one million, it looks like it'll be about a $1 million project. And the, this is our share, which is shared equally between the three municipalities.
Well, but yeah, that's what I was asking. The half a million between the three of us? So do we all have to award this? Thank you. Answered a couple of questions. Moved and seconded? Okay, any more discussion? I love this one. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Okay, request to present Agamani Shakrabarti, that council invite to present the final report on the downtown marketing analysis study at the July Committee of the Whole Meeting.
So moved.
Okay, moved and seconded? Go ahead.
I just wanted to say Manny is a local economist who's been doing a lot of work here locally and elsewhere as well, both nationally and somewhat internationally. She's very talented and I really can't wait to see this analysis study because I've watched some of the work as she put it together and it's pretty interesting stuff, so this is going to be good.
Okay, anybody, anyone else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Tender results, Planning Department vehicle, that council award the tender for the Planning Department Hybrid SUV leased to Thistle Hyundai for $795.38 plus HST per month for three years. Moved and seconded? Any discussion on this one? Any discussion on this one? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Okay, all right, reports, council advisory reports. Committee of the Whole, deputy mayor? That's right, just testing you.
It was a test.
It was a test, and you know who the test was for, it was for me. Okay, committee advised, citizen advisory committees, planning advisory, councillor Cleveland.
Thank you, your worship. Recommended motion that council approve first reading to enter into a development agreement, attachment one, with the owner of 468 Main Street to allow for three short-term rental
Okay, so moved. Have I got a seconder? Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion on this one? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
Next up, recommended motion that council, A, approve the proposed amendment to the municipal planning strategy to change the land use classification of 5 Adelaide Street from residential to secondary commercial. Do we do this individually or just in one big clump? Okay. B, approve the proposed amendment to the land use bylaw to rezone 5 Adelaide Street from low-density residential, R1 Zone, to secondary commercial, C3 Zone. And C, approve in principle and enter into a development agreement with the owner of 5 Adelaide Street to accommodate a new accessory building.
Okay. So moved, have I got a seconder? Moved and seconded. Any discussion on this one? Go ahead, councillor.
Yeah, just that I did voice a concern at the PAC that by changing the classification to secondary commercial, that would allow for the installation of CCANS because they're permitted on commercial properties. And given that it's in, it's adjacent and abutting to residential properties, I hope that's not the the intent. I know that the person that is applying is a good businessman and I'm hopeful that what goes in there is going to be, it's going to fit well within a residential neighborhood. So that's my only concern.
We also need to take a peek at that street.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, it's been long enough. Okay, moved and seconded. Go ahead.
So just just for my information, because I was trying to locate like where this is in relation to the tire pile. Is it behind the tire pile?
Yeah. Well, next to it. Yes, like so one up, closer to to bond, yeah. Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Heritage advisory, who's on heritage? One of you want to take that?
Registration of 19 East Street as a municipally-registered heritage property. Recommended motion is that council approve the registration of 19 East Street as a municipally- municipally-registered heritage property.
Okay, do I get a seconder? Okay, go ahead.
This property apparently has been placked in in the past and just was never registered because of of issues regarding ownership and whatever, so those have been clarified. So now it's just a matter of of just clearing up, clearing that up.
So this is the former Sharon Assembly on East Street. There's been a board that has recently recently took over, registered with joint stocks, and are working towards both municipal, provincial, and national heritage recognition, also applying for grants and really hoping to see that property come back to to life that it once had many years ago. So from, for those of us from Southend that's got a, you know, soft spot in our hearts, been sad over the years to kind of see it deteriorate to what it is, but we don't talk about the past, we'll talk about the future. And I'm glad to see this here and the progress that continues to be made, both at the committee level and through these heritage-registered properties.
Go ahead.
I would encourage every member of council that didn't read the report recommending this to get their hands on it and read it because it outlines the history of that building and the importance of that building to this community. I have one question for the deputy mayor, though, is that in a previous life, I attended that building on numerous occasions, as you can imagine. And in reading the report, it said it seats 250 people. And I was trying to imagine 250 people seated in there. Is that possible?
Under any fire marshal regulations, that's for sure.
Okay, thank you, I just.
I know I know back in the day, sometimes they had outdoor services and stuff, so that might be kind of a throwback to that, but definitely not in the building. That would, yeah, be a touchy hand for sure.
As a bit of a history, as somebody appreciates the built heritage in this in this community, I think it's high time that that building was brought back to life and good and good on you and good on the board.
Yeah, thank you.
Go ahead, councillor Lesser.
Just on a historical note, does anybody know the the rationale, or the reason that it was had Disney name in it at one point, I believe? Steve, do you know the connection there or what that is?
So I've been told that there's there was a reverend back in the day that was Disney was his last name in there. I believe there were several in Nova Scotia, not just in Yarmouth, but that is the last standing one. I will say Chuck Smith or Kenny Fells are very deeply rooted in the the history, so I can give you the exact story. But, yeah, going through what it was, because that was one of my questions as well, because when we registered for the joint stocks, we had to come up with a new name and that was kind of thrown out there. And, you know, Disney doesn't exactly bring your mind to a local black church. So I'm glad it was, you know, kind of renamed Sharon Assembly and we'll definitely go from there, but I'll definitely get you some history on that. Thank you.
Good stuff. Okay, are we good? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Okay, reports for information, questions for committee chairs. Anybody have any questions for committee chairs? I was gonna ask if councillor Heather, councillor Cleveland had anything from FCM on the spot.
Sure, we attended FCM in Calgary, Heather and I both. Made some trouble, no, that's not really true.
Well, that's what I heard.
But it was it was very good. I always enjoy FCM. You talk about, always talk about professional development, and sometimes people forget what professional development really means. And to me, there's there's a couple of things that I'd like to mention. First off, the fact that you're there with so many other municipal councillors from all across the country and you're talking to each other, you're doing that networking, and you're figuring out the fact that our problems aren't that much different than every other place's problems all over the country. And that makes it, in a way, kind of feel good that you know that you're not in this alone. There are there are certain things that make things unique. Couple of scratches of head when I asked what you were doing. Gil, you'll nod to this one, but when I asked about what you guys are doing about the deer issue and having people in the West go, what's a deer issue? So ran into that a couple of times. The trade show is one of my favorite parts. And you get an opportunity to learn so much from those trade shows and and to dream and to see what the trends are. There's a lot of talk of circular economy, there's a lot of of waste-related things. I was very excited about a couple of different things there. So within that trade show, you get some amazing ideas, not just with waste, but with other things as well. And it's kind of inspiring, I have to admit. The other thing is, some of the sessions that we attended, I look very, I really look forward to some of the great sessions. But I have to say that this time, going to some of those sessions, and the one that comes to mind right off the top of my head, I won't get into too much detail, but I excitedly went to one about tourism and and doing things right in terms of tourism. And I wanted to hear what they had to say about that. And while I learned a few things about Destination Canada and what they do and made some great connections, the things that they were talking about are things we're already doing. And that feels pretty good, too. You know, we're, we are, in my mind, a pretty progressive municipality, and it's exciting to see that. And it's exciting to see that, in all honesty, some of those sessions, we could have, we could have spoken at and and taught just as easily as the people who did. And you know what? It feels pretty damn good. The other part is Calgary itself, which was, it's it's always inspiring to go to different places and learn what they're doing. And Calgary has a real ability in their placemaking. And this, it's something that we've talked about a lot here, too, but their ability to create areas where whether the arts can thrive or where where businesses thrive and the way that the the areas are set up with all the different statues and, you know, areas where those where people gather, it's it's pretty interesting and it's nice to see. And I, you always bring back, at the very least, a lot of great ideas. It was certainly worthwhile.
Good stuff.
Yeah, thank you, councillor Cleveland, I think, kind of summed summed everything up. But and that was kind of the thought that came to my head when you first asked was, we really are ahead of a lot of other municipalities and in the in the country. And many things that, ideas that were thrown out, we're already doing, we're doing it. So it just makes you feel really proud of of our town and what what we're doing and what, you know, what councils in the past have have led us to to be able to do. So, you know, that was really great. And Calgary itself, we loved it. And the thing that kind of struck for me was how pedestrian-friendly that city is. It was so easy to navigate in that downtown center central core. The lights, you might wait two minutes as a pedestrian and then everything stops and you go. And then, you know, then the lights change and the and the cars can go. The flow of that city in that area was really phenomenal. And so they have, they've done a, they've done a great job at just making things happen. So, yeah, it was great.
Thank you. Yes, by all means.
Yeah, I just want to jump in, and my my activity around the conference was some somewhat curtailed, but there was the avenue that that went between the two sections of the conference center, and you probably noticed that it had no curbs, right? It was all one-level pedestrian. That's the same concept as our consultants developed for us for the First Street project, if and when we get that project off the ground. So I was, I was intrigued to see that. It's much like Argyle Street in Halifax, same idea. And, you know, maybe someday that that idea will come come to live in Yarmouth. It's it's kind of a shame. I regret honestly that when we did Main Street and the sewer water project there, that we weren't thinking about that at the time and considering having no grade separation on Main Street, but do Main Street in a way that could have been a little more pedestrian-friendly. But that's that's hindsight. We have an opportunity on First Street. One of the things that that kind of surprised me in walking around the trade show and talking to some of the vendors of of Christmas tree lights, one of them said, oh, Yarmouth, we deal with Yarmouth, Todd. So you can go a long ways away in Canada and still still make connections and people know our community for some of the good things that we're that we're doing, some of the good people that we have. So, yeah, it was a, that was a wonderful conference. As you also know, I attended the administrators' conference in in Alberta when when I was there, and that was, again, an amazing conference, much smaller than than NSFM. I think it was 300 delegates, so it's it's a cozier conference and you do get an opportunity to network a little bit there that, you know, you're not so overwhelmed with the numbers. But just wanted to mention that and thank council again for the support to be able to do that. And as you know, I did successfully get elected to the board of CAMA, so I'll be I'll be spending a little bit of time on that work over the next few years, so I'm excited about that.
We're excited, too. And I'm glad you said it because you're too humble to let us post it, so I'm glad it's on television. Right? Exactly. No, that's a, that's a big deal, being elected to the CAMA board, and we're really proud of you. Anyone else? Go ahead.
Just congratulations on that appointment. But on other committee reports, we haven't heard from your worship yet about Jordan. So I'm wondering if there's a time or an opportunity that, I don't, I'm sure it's more than a few-minute presentation that you've.
It probably is a longer presentation, and I should probably put something together to do that. But I did spend 10 days in Jordan. And I guess the the only way I can say it, and I've said it to the CAO before, that that I'm still letting it settle in because it was it was such a big deal, not just the the work trip and everything I learned there, but the whole experience of you're in the Middle East and and you're driving down the street and you say, you know, what's that fence? Oh, Israel's on the other side. And that's something you just watch on television these days because you're certainly not gonna fly to the to the Middle East. But I learned so much there. I feel like I I got a university degree in in a whole lot of things. The schooling's different, and we did go there as a team, and it's probably one of the best teams I've worked with, second best. I'm not saying best, second best, considering you folks at the table, to do that, what's that?
Nice catch.
Right? That talent pipeline. So to to go over there to find talent to bring, and you can bring them to Nova Scotia as soon as they figure out that it's there, it's going to be Canada-wide. So Angelequent, so with me sitting at the table as well, that pipeline comes right to Yarmouth. They did get 32 folks from, I want to say Kenya, in Mahombe for healthcare, so that was a big deal. And, you know, folks are always saying, we need housing, we need housing. And we know that, but we don't have anybody to build it. So, you know, I'm over there looking for skilled trades, that type of thing. And the province is looking for different demographics. So, yeah, it's a, it's a bigger picture than just five minutes, but I'm glad to sit down and and have that conversation. Thank you for asking. Anyone else? Okay. Don't update me yet. Date of next meet, approval of invoices. Let the various invoices be approved. Okay, thank you, because they're signed. Moved and seconded. Discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Date of next meeting, are we still good with July 11? Okay. Do we have anything in camera? Okay, so let's do that right now. Committee of the Whole? It is grad now.
Your worship, that's, it would normally fall on 27th of June, and I understand there's graduation at the high school that evening, there's also a graduation at Drumland that I'm, I won't miss.
No, you shouldn't.
So if if you want to consider whether or not there's the ability to move that, Committee of the Whole, maybe to the to the day prior. Sorry, I'm gonna get my schedule up here before I say the wrong thing because I know I just did. So the UARB, we spoke at the beginning of this meeting, we do have a hearing in this room on the the schedule for the 25th and 26th of June, so that would be the the two previous days. If we were open to an evening Committee of the Whole, or, you know, say, 5 o'clock or something, I would imagine that would be possible without interfering with the hearing.
That Wednesday night, that 5?
Your time goes to 26th. Especially if it's like a 5 o'clock, that would be better.
How's your staff with that?
Well, that will be a challenge, perhaps for some, but, you know, we'll just.
So let me ask this. Who who can't come during the day?
I can't, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's it. Yeah, no, I was just, I guess I was thinking school.
Maybe it doesn't work.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So put it, put it at 5 o'clock if that works for people. And I'll advise staff and, you know, their reports are at the beginning of the meeting, so if there's stuff that we need to talk to them about, you know. so if there's stuff that we need to talk to them about, you know, that'll be okay. Yeah.
I don't like that.
Yeah, we'll...
What do we do? Is that the 26th?
26th.
26th at 5. Okay, so we're, okay, Lindsay will send that out anyway. Okay, good. What's that? 26th.
Because the Monday, well, yeah, because Monday, often you guys have.
Okay, anything in camera?
No, I was just gonna mention the one thing that...
Yes, let's go in camera, let them do that. Okay. Motion to adjourn, please. Moved and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you.